All right, let's go ahead and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good morning, everyone. It is Monday, April 14th. Welcome to the Shawnee County Board of County Commissioners Work Session. I'm Aaron Mays. I serve as the Chair this year and I represent District 3. On my right is Commissioner Kevin Cook. He represents District 2. Commissioner Bill Ruppon is not with us today, so you're stuck with just the two of us. Great to see such a full room. I think these are getting bigger and bigger every time we do it. So that's exciting. Do you want to go ahead and start us off, Angela? Only thing on the agenda today is employee recognition, so...
Wonderful. Well, welcome, everyone. Good morning to our employee recognition and anniversary and retiree recognition is what I should say. Commissioners, if you'd like to take your places up front. Just as a matter of housekeeping, when your name is called, please come to the front, shake hands with commissioners. You'll receive your awards. If you're in a five or 10-year category, we'll have you step to the side for just a moment and then we'll come back and take a group picture. Anyone with over 10 years will be recognized individually. So thank you and again, welcome. We'll start with our group of five-year employees. They include Florentina Banuelos Velasquez, Randy Bailey, Cleve Beaver, Caleb Dickey, Hillary Green, John Landon, Nathan Pryor, and Stephanie Shaw. If the five-year participants would like to come back up, we'll take a group photo. Next, we'll have our 10-year recipients. We have Alexander Brushke, Helen Farbach, Leanne Good, and Barbara Lewis, who I know can't be here today. That concludes our 10 years. Everyone that we recall after this point will have 20 years of service or more. We'd like to start with Lisa Schmidt.
All right. My name is Lisa Schmidt and I am with the County Clerk's Office. And first, I would like to recognize Trisha Kirkwood. Come on down. Today, we're celebrating Trisha for her remarkable 30 years in the Shawnee County Clerk's Office. Trisha brings unwavering devotion and keeps our services seamless. Her adaptability and supportiveness strengthen our team and make our office shine. Trisha, thank you and congratulations. Next, I'd like to call Lori. We're here to honor Lori for an incredible 45 years with the Shawnee County Clerk's Office. Lori has been the heart of our operations, ensuring everything she does is handled with care and precision. Her expertise has shaped our office and served countless residents, leaving a lasting impact on our community. Thank you, Lori, and congratulations.
Brian Cole, if you please come up.
All right. I don't believe Eugene. See, there's Eugene here. Oh, come on up, Eugene. Eugene Redman from the Shawnee County Department of Corrections Juvenile Detention Center, recognizing 20 years of service to Shawnee County. That Eugene has been an honored member of our juvenile detention staff, that Eugene has a tremendous compassion and passion for working with our youth offenders. He's been a leader among his peers and he does a tremendous job. That we are one of the few agencies that are accredited by multiple accreditation agencies and Eugene's hard work is a big part of that. Eugene, thank you for everything. Nancy. Nancy Davidson, Shawnee County Department of Corrections. Most of her work is on the Adult Detention Center, 20 years. Now, the last time I was here, I had a big group of people that were Chicago Bears fans and we took that all in stride. But Nancy and I have a different connection. Yes, we are believer and we will find Bigfoot one day. Media, just leave it as it is right there. But Nancy is tough. Nancy takes her job very seriously. She works in all areas of the facility. She's been a trainer, a mentor to our new staff. She holds people accountable and that includes me. Nancy is not afraid to send out an email to mentor and to let staff know, hey, look, we need to pick up this area in the facility or we need to do a better job here and that. And I welcome that leadership that Nancy provides to all the staff. Nancy does a tremendous job and we're a better agency because... Nancy, thank you. Seth. Seth Haynes, Shawnee County Department of Corrections, of 20 years. Seth served multiple roles. He started out in the Adult Detention Center, worked multiple areas of the facility, modules, mentoring other staff, leadership. And then he went and moved and transferred over to our Community Corrections. He carries a, you know, they all carry a tremendous caseload and work with some high-risk offenders. Seth takes his job very seriously. He holds others accountable. He sets expectations and example for others to follow. And that includes those that he works with to help them get better on recovery and breaking the cycle of incarceration. Seth makes our agency much better and Seth, I appreciate everything you do. Thank you. Nicole. Nicole Collins, Shawnee County Department of Corrections, 25 years. Nicole started out in our records area, Count Clerk 2, and then going to Count Clerk 3, working up. You know, and now she works as an administrative officer. We do not give our clerical staff and those who work in those agencies enough credit. This is a foundation for our agency, keeping our payroll going, keeping our inmate and all of our accounts going, making sure the books balance at the end of the day, which I know pleases the commissioners and our audit finance. But Nicole's right there. Nicole took over a new leadership role, working over the mailroom or payroll. Nicole does an outstanding job. She reminds staff, a timely reminder, should I say, of making sure timesheets are done. She corrects errors. She takes care of my timesheet, which we know is a, creates its own havoc. But Nicole, I tremendously appreciate everything you do and thank you. Shawna. Shawna Hendricks, Shawnee County Department of Corrections for 30 years. Shawna, like Nicole, has served multiple roles in Shawnee County. When I started and Shawna came on, she worked in our food service within there and did a tremendous job. And then, as if we moved over to a private sector, Shawna moved over and transferred into our records department, Count Clerk 2, Count Clerk 3. But I will tell you, there was a time when we had an accreditation or an emergency, Shawna dropped the pen and the keyboard and went in and helped serve meals and I was alongside her. And we need to make sure those get done. Shawna now serves in Account Clerk 3 and works in our, is it Account Clerk 3? Yes. And does all of our inventory, all of our ordering, all of, you name it, she's on top of it to make sure that the orders we put in, that we get. And when they come in, she's right there with the vendor, making sure that we got what we ordered. Again, another one of those staff members that we take for granted and work a thankless job. And I don't say thank you enough for the job that they do. Believe it or not, we pay a lot of attention to our security staff and work at Department of Corrections. We need equally pay attention to those who are doing our clerical work, that are behind the scenes, are a foundation of our department. We couldn't be where we're at today without them. And so Shawna, thank you for your tremendous commitment and thank you for everything. Thank you.
Bill Sutton.
Good morning, Bill Sutton, Shawnee County Solid Waste. I had high hopes I'd actually get an attendee here today, but that was not the case. So today, we are recognizing Domingo Lopez's 20-year of service to Shawnee County Solid Waste. Domingo started as a groundsman 20 years ago with a CDL. He wanted to learn the lay of the land. And then after four or five months, he got applied to be a driver, stayed in the driver role for about 15, no, about 17 years. And then he got promoted to Route Supervisor, where he is currently out there supervising employees today, which is why he's not here, because he's taking care of some business. So appreciate Domingo's hard work every day. So appreciate Domingo's hard work every day. He gets the job done, and I'd just like to thank him for his public service.
Mark Price.
Morning. Mark Price, Information Technology. First off, I'd like to recognize Todd Polinski for 20 years of service with IT. Todd came on 20 years ago as a operator.[563.82][563.82](applause) Todd, if you don't know him, really, we would not get paid without him, our bills would not get paid. We wouldn't have exactly time to clock in and out of. Todd's very integral to every department and what our employees need to get paid is the big part. And Todd's been a, pretty much a light most of the time. We used to keep him hidden away in our operations area. Now, we have let him out to the rest of the world, but would just like to thank Todd for the last 20 years.[596.04][596.04](applause) Next, we have Ryan Bomshin for 25 years.[604.73][604.73](applause) Ryan started off kind of like I did. We both came in, he came in as a programmer, I came in as a tech. We've both stuck it out, worked our way through and up the IT department. We've also kind of reflected our families, both got married about the same time, had older daughters their same age. He waited a year to have his son. We've both done a lot of growing here at Shawnee County with our family and at work. He's now a project manager, mainly takes care of the sheriff and DOC and DA's systems. He's kind of our corrections, CEGIS specialist, and without him, you know, people wouldn't be getting the law enforcement side when it happened, and we really would not survive without him, thank you, Ryan.[661.82][661.82](applause) Next, we have Brandi Biltoff, who has 25 years with the county.[670.23][670.23](applause) Now, Brandi has actually only been in the IT department for two years, but she started off her career at the Juvenile Detention Center, has been in corrections up until two years ago. I think she really took what she learned dealing with those juveniles and incarcerated people to come deal with the IT department. She's been very, very influential since coming to IT, setting some standards and policy ideas that we hadn't been following. And I think, you know, in future years, she will be a great, currently, she is a great addition, but also will continue to be a great addition to the IT department.[717.13][717.13](applause) And then finally, we have Aseem Shake. He is not here. He's also celebrating 25 years. He started off as a programmer and now as a project manager. I'm going to keep this kind of short, because he's actually retiring, and will be back for our July, where we'll recognize his retirement from Shawnee County. Thank you.[742.11][742.11](applause)
Good morning. Major Lawridge, Sheriff's Office. First, I'll call up Captain Caleb Akery.[758.11][758.11](applause) Captain Akery has spent 25 years with our agency. He joined us January 31, 2000. He's worked in a myriad of different divisions of the Sheriff's Office. He was promoted to captain in October of 2017. He currently serves as our administrative captain. Caleb graduated from Washburn University in 1999. He, in 2015, graduated from the Kansas University Public Manager Centers Merchant Leaders Academy. In 2016, he graduated 20, or the KU Public Manager Centers LEEVA Command School, and he received his Certified Public Manager Certification. So Caleb continues to chase some of his passions, one of the big one being, he's a field training officer instructor. He contracts through the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center, travels the state, training various officers from different agencies around the state of Kansas. So thank you for your service.[828.32][828.32](applause) Next, I'll call up Ben Scheid.[836.11][836.11](applause) Ben came to us from the Shawnee County Department of Corrections. He joined our agency in, in 2000, is that correct? Since he's been with us, he's spent the majority of his career in patrol, and a lot of you probably have seen him over at courthouse security. He has since transferred to our process unit, serving different orders, evictions, protection abuse orders, et cetera. And one thing about Ben, he's been a member of our SWAT team for years. As you can see, he's a big muscular guy. He likes to think that he's still young, and he tries to lift heavy and he hurts himself. So we encourage him to adapt to your age.[892.23][892.23](laughter) Lighter weights, more reps. It's okay. It happens in the best of things. Thank you, Ben, for your service.[900.01][900.01](applause)
Next, we'll have Tim Laurent.
Tim Laurent, Parks and Recreation Department. First, I'd like to start off with recognizing Dustin Hollenbeck.[921.00][921.00](applause) Dustin has 20 years with Shawnee County. He, he started his career here. He made a career change because he wanted to spend more time with his family. He was in the construction background. He started as a park maintenance worker. He's been working in facilities this entire time. Dustin is a very versatile gentleman. Not only has he been, worked in horticulture, he's worked in facilities, construction, plumbing, you name it, he's doing it. Also has a very creative side, helped co-create, co-design the pergoda out at Ted Endley Gardens. He did the steel panels there and the design work on that. So all around, great guy, been a great addition to Shawnee County, and we're very fortunate to have him.[974.38][974.38](applause) Next, I'd like to bring up Kevin Stoner.[981.82][981.82](applause) Kevin has 25 years with Shawnee County. Kevin got his degree from Bethany College. He had two decades of, he brings over two decades of experience to our department. He started out as a recreation leader at the Paris Community Center, which is now run by the Boys and Girls Club. From there, he's served various roles, got into sports programming, started taking care of our athletic fields in 2016. And I think part of what Kevin has done is really taken our Betis Family Sports Complex and made it what it is. Kevin played a big role in that, continues to play a giant role, obviously, in all of our athletic and sports facilities. And when I say that, there's, there's a lot. I mean, you know, 32 baseball fields, I think we're up to over 30 pickleball courts, sand volleyball courts, tennis, basketball, you name it, Kevin oversees it. So it's a big job. He does a great job. And again, very fortunate to have you, and thank you for all your hard work.[1053.54][1053.54](applause) Mike, come on up. Curtney House, Public Works.[1075.23][1075.23](applause) Mike Welch started his career with Shawnee County Public Works in late March 1985. That means he's got 40 years with Shawnee County. He graduated from KU in May 1984, and if you look at his hat, which I have to look at every day, he is a big Jayhawk fan.[1100.41][1100.41](applause) Former county engineer, Public Works Director John Terrison hired Mike. When Mike started, the Public Works Department was located in the basement of the county courthouse. Who remembers that? Where the county commission chambers were previously located. Wow. Public Works Garage was located in the present Harley-Davidson Building, along with a sheriff's department substation and the Noxious Weed Department. What goes around comes around.[1130.54][1130.54](laughter) Mike tells me that he's enjoyed his 40 years employed with Shawnee County Public Works because every day is different, and that's a fact. He enjoys the variety of work and the fact he's not stuck in the office, doing the same things day in, day out. He likes being able to visit his construction projects and working with the public on various issues. And I know, Mike, you're good at that. On the other hand, Mike told me he didn't enjoy the long hours during the '93 flood.[1161.13][1161.13](laughter) On more than one occasion, Mike saw the sunrise as he was working to prevent flooding in Silver Lake. So I want to personally appreciate, I personally appreciate Mike for the institutional knowledge. I mean, 40 years at one place, that's tremendous. And if I ever want to know how something came to be this way, or why we do things this way, Mike knows. And I appreciate that. Let's all thank Mike for 40 years of service.[1192.73][1192.73](applause)
Teresa Fisher with the Health Department.
Good morning. Teresa Fisher, Director of the Health Department. Today, it's my pleasure to recognize Ann Bartlow.[1214.83][1214.83](applause) Ann has 25 years of dedicated service to not only the Shawnee County Health Department, but more importantly, to the children and families that we serve through childcare licensing. Ann's commitment to ensuring safe and nurturing environments for our children here in Shawnee County is truly inspiring, and we're grateful for her years of expertise and service. For a quarter of a century, Ann has been a cornerstone to our team in childcare licensing. She's helped to navigate the complexities of childcare licensing with grace and dedication, and there's been a lot of changes over the years. Her knowledge, experience, and ability to mentor others have made a profound difference. We see you not just as a licensing specialist, but as a champion for the children's well-being. Thank you for your commitment to the children and families we serve.[1267.13][1267.13](applause)
At this point, we'd like to recognize our retirees. The following people have dedicated their time and talent to Shawnee County, and we'd like to honor them. Like to invite Lisa Schmidt back up to the podium.
Rhonda Preyswater, retired from the Shawnee County Clerk's Office with 33 years of service. And I don't think we've pulled her away from retirement, so she is not here to be with us today. But I did want to read the last email that she sent out to our team in her honor. She said, "I've been employed with Shawnee County for 32-plus years and in the county clerk's office for 26-plus years. It's really going to be different to not walk through these doors, security, every morning. In this timeframe, there have been so many individuals who have come and gone, and when I stop to think, the time has really flown by. The only original coworker who is still here is Lori, and I'm sure she can remember my first day as well. There have been a lot of changes, some good, some not so good, in my opinion, but that is life, and life goes on. We've had a lot of good laughs, shed some tears, vented frustrations, asked for opinions, and showed our support for each other. Whether we agreed or disagreed, we all have stood strong, and we have all stood together. We have shared pictures, family stories, vacation adventures, and many more personal things over these years. To me, you are all my extended family, and I'm going to miss those moments. I wish you all continued success in whatever adventures you choose, and hopefully, you will still reach out from time to time, as I would love to keep in touch. It is now time to leave and say goodbye." So we honor Rhonda in her 33 years of service with the County Clerk's Office.[1380.04][1380.04](applause)
Detective Ryan Myers.[1395.73][1395.73](applause) Ryan Myers started the Shawnee County Sheriff's Office October 9, 2000. A Topeka native, he graduated from Washburn University with a Bachelor's of Science in Criminal Justice in 1999. Initially, he was assigned to our patrol division. During that assignment, he was selected as a community police officer in the Monterrey Community, and he helped pioneer our bicycle unit. Shortly thereafter, he was selected for a position in investigations narcotics, where he worked for several years before being promoted to a detective. And Ryan recently retired from us in February this year, so we wish him the best, and thank you for your service, dedication to the citizens of Topeka, Shawnee County, and for being
Bill Sutton.
Bill Sutton, Shawnee County Solid Waste. And today, we are recognizing Larry Lesser for his 27 years of service to Shawnee County. This is as close as I can get to somebody being here.[1478.73][1478.73](laughter) So Larry, you hear a lot of people, Larry joined the department Jan- January 12, 1998. And a lot of people, you hear, they move from position to position to position. Not Larry. Larry started in one job, and he finished in one job. He was the residential container maintenance. He was the guy that drives pickup and trailer around, delivering totes, repairing totes all throughout the county. And I can say this with 100% confidence, that Larry has traveled every road in this county. And he'd be a great pizza delivery guy.[1515.83][1515.83](laughter) But Larry retired on us, and he is pursuing his passion, which is golfing, and I am sure he's, if he's not on the golf course, he has a tee time scheduled. So Larry, if you're watching this, which I really don't think you are, appreciate your service, and thank you.[1534.54][1534.54](applause)
Well, we'd like to thank everyone. We cannot thank you enough for your dedication and your years of service to Shawnee County. The commissioners will take over and finish the meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Should we go back to the microphones?
Sure.
So congratulations, everyone. You know, the first couple of years that I was a commissioner, we didn't do this. And, you know, during COVID, we didn't do anything at all to recognize our employees. And so I, we thought that that was something that needed to be addressed, and so we started doing these maybe, I don't know, six months ago, seven, a year ago now? So this is, and like I said earlier, every time, it gets a little bit bigger. The first couple, it seemed like there were a lot of people that didn't come, which, you know, it's great that people are so dedicated to their jobs, right? That they didn't want to come and get out of work for a few hours. But, but at the same time, I think that it, these are always, it's a constant reminder, I think, to us, number one, of just how great the people are that work here. Also, the variety of things that we do. I mean, as you listen to people talk about all of the different folks that are here getting recognized today, I mean, everything from a guy delivering trash totes to houses, to the guy who makes sure you get paid, you know, all of that stuff. And so, I mean, it really is a pretty neat place to work. And, you know, the longevity that you guys have is fantastic. And one of the things that we really take pride in is the culture at Shawnee County. We want to have a really good culture. And you guys, the people that have been here for all these years, are the culture. You're the ones that set the tone for all of the new people that come in. And so I really appreciate everything that you guys do, and hope that we can keep you around for another recognition in another five years. But, you know, I, Lori's over there rolling her eyes. She's like, 45 years is enough. So, you know, this is fantastic. Thank you, guys, for coming today. It's always good to see everybody's faces in person as well. So Mr. Cook.
I would just like to thank Angela and the HR Department for setting this up. There's a lot of work that goes into researching and making sure we've got all the certificates for everybody. But your average business studies program will tell you that an employee will stay with a company for about three and a half years. That's your average. Today, we are recognizing employees that have worked with us for 10, 15, 20, 45 years. That speaks something to Shawnee County. For somebody to be willing to serve their public, that speaks to their character. Many times, they will have the commissioners give an opening speech to new employees. And we talk about what's the difference between working for a company and working for Shawnee County? If you're going to work for a company, you're in the pursuit of making a widget or making a profit for the business. In Shawnee County, we are here about serving our public and serving our community and making our place a little bit better to live. And so I want to thank all of you for making Shawnee County a little bit better place to live for all that you do. So thank you very much.[1763.13][1763.13](applause)
All right. So I do not have anybody signed up for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, do we have any administrative communications at all? We do not have a need for executive session, so we're adjourned.[1786.04][1786.04](applause)